Say.
I will see if motion will carry which.
Morning.
Morning.
Um, had a meeting that called this is district two or. Regional meetings for the DOT, little update on the IIJ. A is and I don't know what's wrong now that funding, you know, the talk is that we have all this increased funding for bridges and roads and. The thing is, is that because and I think I maybe kind of gave you guys a little heads up on this last week that. Because it's federally, it's federal money that's being increased. The state can't keep up with being able to swap everything out, you know, a few years back, we went and got swap money. Um, they did say, however, now that everything that we're. Planning and budgeting for for STP and bridge money now as to back to federally. So now it's an eighty twenty split on system bridges. We can do a hundred percent federal money on off system bridges, but now we still got to use. The eighty percent, twenty percent formula like we had used in the past, so. We'll have to supplement some bridge work now with farm to market money. To match the, to help match the federally money on our system stuff. So now I've got to watch those two programs to get a little closer. So they're changing the way. Um, the funding is going out and yeah, it's twenty five, thirty percent increase in total funding. But keep in mind. Everything's gone up, got more expensive contractors aren't. Friendly available as it used to be with all the bridges out there that are getting repaired. I don't think that, yeah, it's great. We've got the extra money, but I think that price increases and the demand is just going to wipe it out. We'll be just where we said, where we said. But that's just an update on some of the stuff and the funding is probably is more important than right now. So I've got to go back in and change some budgeting, change some numbers. Try to reevaluate. Where we set with all of our farm to market and now our bridge money to balance things back out. So just kind of keep you aware of what's going on, but you'll have. We'll turn ours. U O T budget program in. I'll bring it to you the week of the fifteenth of April. Other than that, we're just, you know, doing some spring work, doing some spot lighting here and there. Get the equipment ready for spring.
I take snow from off, yeah.
Huh?
I take a snow.
Uh, they should be, I should, I'll tell them today. I mean, we. We should start taking wings off some of these blades because we need the wings for anything.
We'll see.
The ditches are empty, so there's really not a whole lot. We don't want to push everything off, so. Yeah, famous last word. Well, the Robins are here, so we got a couple of snows yet, don't we? We will get two of them this week and not. That's all I've got for this morning.
Anywhere on road graders?
Uh, I'm trying to figure out budget side. I told. I told Kat. Kind of reserve two of them, not necessarily for this county, but at least one for this county, maybe one for Mitch County, but get the numbers to work, so. But. Yeah, I didn't want to leave. I don't want to miss out, but I want to make sure the funding is where it needs to be.
Right. Correct.
All right, we don't have any drains or planes, right?
A motion to approve the planes.
All second.
Through the discussion. And I don't know what's good, say I.
I.
Motion.
What?
Sorry. Report, take the motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve of court report, say.
Moving second and through discussion. You know, I'll just say. I post inside. To liquidizes. Yeah, I said benefit renewal for twenty. F Y twenty three.
Fun will be over here, but there's no papers this year, it seems like. It's um, vision and dental. The open charts itself and then.
Okay, so I will take a motion to dissect benefit renewal program. Motion to prove it.
Your second.
I will say.
Just moving second and through the discussion. Hearing all of this, all right.
All right.
All same sign.
All of that. There's lines on here.
Oh, okay.
On the bottom of signature. It's not, you really know, that's what you want.
I guess. Yep.
Yeah.
Authorized decision maker.
I do you.
So you decide first one.
This is all, all your, I'll put your name above it.
Okay. This should be us.
Morning board, you should have in front of you a two pager that. Has numerous signatures on it. With me also this morning is Steve Bonesteiner representing vehicle thought. And Jeannie Tenel representing one of the landowners that that's signed on this particular resolution. Uh, we know, uh, based on past discussions that, uh, the board is considering. Expanding the taxing from a financing district down in the Manly area to accommodate. I s- I think the name of the company is called Biofuels America or something like that. And, um, and based upon the current map. Uh, of the tax increment financing district supplied by by NIAAC. Um, the folks that have signed this particular request are all, other than the co-op, are contiguous landowners. Uh, to the manly terminal and the manly logistics park. Uh, given the fact that that you're considering expanding the taxing for the financing district to accommodate, uh, the business expansion. And the fact that the co-op. Um, added last fall, an additional bunker, which has not been captured by the assessor in the property tax valuation. Uh, we would like, uh, the, the folks that have signed this, including the Hatmans. Ourself, Jeannie, uh, and the co-op, uh, we would like you to consider adding to your tax increment finance district proposal. The following parcels, I did not give legal descriptions. That, of course, would be done by the attorneys that would draft your, your official taxing from a financing or urban renewal district. Uh, but we included what are called the beacon parcels from the assessor so that you would. Understand which parcels would be included. Uh, we, we meaning the adjacent landowners had a couple of different meetings and a lot of emails and phone calls going back and forth. Uh, other folks that were privy to our conversations were the Hill, uh, Andy and Michelle Hill. Uh, the Hungerford family, uh, the Wilkins family, uh, and the Byron Hill Trust, which would be Andy Hill's mother Susan. Uh, those folks that I just mentioned chose not to wish to be included at this time, but the opportunity was, was given to. All of the adjacent landowners were. Uh, and, uh, and we wanted to present this to the board so that you would consider expanding the tech, the tax increment financing district. Particularly important to import to capturing it would be the co-op property, which already has the bunker built. And are, are planning on expanding additionally and had some conversations with the Iowa Northern Railroad. So we all understand the ramifications of the taxing from the financing district captures the value for improvements within that district. And, uh, and we'd like to make sure that the county has the opportunity of, if one of the other, if any of these properties would be. Um, approached by additional business that it would already be in the taxi for financing district and would be ready to go. And we'll take any questions that you may have, otherwise it's pretty self inspired, sorry.
Do you feel has some interest in doing some additional projects on that property that purchase. Okay, with where the screen facility is today. It's, we have to make a decision between that location or Northwood here in Northwood. Okay, but here in Northwood, we can, within the city limits, right? So like that, that facility because the, you know, they're right on the rail and. For a lot more things to adjust. Sweep this down from there.
Sure.
So you're saying there are some future project possibilities on the vehicle property?
Yes, we've already had some conversations with the Alworth and we are having another conversation with them tomorrow. Actually, they are part of the manly terminal. We have a strong relationship with the other, we've had for years because of all of our other facilities on the. And we've got so interested in doing some things other than greater that facility or that project, yes, you're saying.
Um. I'll be, my question for Cindy, but is the bunker even, are we able to tax that? Because is it considered a structure? So we can't taxi like you quit them, you know, your conveyor, that kind of stuff is just equipment to us is the, is the bunker actually considered a structure?
Well, I would assume it is, I mean, we're, we're two put walls on it and, you know, we still have the intention of putting additional walls for another bunker. I mean, we've done a lot of, just basically do it right now. And electrical. But the, the idea is to do even more things other than just those two.
I would like to guess Cindy, you could probably, like, top Iowa.
Calum, but I didn't get him on that.
Or Joyce, like Joyce, the outside facilities, uh, that used to be the top Iowa, but those cement structures, they're attached.
Whatever's there, we keep it that.
Right. To value and storage or whatever.
They just know there's, there's no value in equipment versus an actual building or structure of some sort, so that is, you know, kind of curiosity there. Any other possible projects with other lands in the area or they just? Plan it for the future.
Plan it for the future. Uh, I believe the half when Steve in a conversation. Uh, said to me that they were approached for something, or at least they had received a couple of phone calls. This is not the current portion that's within the rail loop, but it was actually east, east of the track. So that's one reason why they were really interested in getting in at this particular time.
Well, since I know with this, when we do it, obviously we can put it in there, put it on the map, make it that plan, but then. In the future, we would have to go back and update again. To specify the project to be able to capture or utilize that TIF dollar to spend it on. You know, infrastructure or whatever it may be, if we got to, if we got to redo road up in that area or whatever, that. Um, we have to specify the project as well, so.
Or incentives.
Be right, yeah. Field has several tips with other communities and colleagues within our geographical areas. We've dealt this before, so we'd be glad to sit down and talk.
But as other businesses want to come in, they're probably going to want to tax it, which means you're going to stick it back in the urban renewal plan again anyway.
So it just will be in when we're doing, in my opinion. And it, you know, it doesn't really change anything until something is built in, so.
It was Jane, nothing else. We specify that we're going to take the TIF dollar or just tax roll.
Whatever.
Just wants that closure.
Exactly, and during being, you're paying for the process right now. As long as they're willing to be included, that's, it's a good time to do it, I think.
Anything else? No, I just like to look at the parcels.
Yeah.
On beacon, I see where they're all looking. When I get home. See what it all entails down there and how big of an area it is.
Do, do you know off the top of your head on the acres you're talking about?
Oh, it's pretty simple. Uh, you're dealing with, uh.
Just take that number.
Twenty, two hundred, about two forty plus the minor parcels that are within the city of Manly.
Okay.
On the current, uh, vehicle site, so. You have, well.
So that would be there. There for very near area.
Correct, the, the three parcels of the four listed for, for via field are actually within the city limits. So, um, and then the fourth parcel is the forty where the, uh, the bunker, the new bunker sits.
And that's what we're looking at yours. Most of the best.
On the county side of the road.
Yes, there you go.
So Manly would have to sign off.
Or they'd have to do it. Put it in their renewal plan, I guess. I don't know how that works.
I was thinking that's a question for John Danes.
Yeah, on whether we can, we'd have to either talk to Manly or Manly, if they wanted to. Participate, get involved and assist with some stuff. Incentives, they, like I said, they're going to sign off and give us their graces or they can get in too. And assist any property owners or prior property that the field has, so. Maybe we can run this by our attorney since he's working on it. Look at it again next week if that's okay.
That's what I'd say.
Just make sure we're taking the proper steps, especially with, with those parcels that are being in, in the city limits and out of the city.
So Mr. Danos, I, I have talked to John, uh, regarding this when we were initially going through the process. So there's two things that are important, as you're, you're correct. That the city of Manly would have to be consulted with actually with not only the parcels within. But any of the parcels that are within two miles, so there are other, there are other parcels within this request. That the city of Manly would have to be consulted, but it's just second thing is, is that once they're in. The clock starts ticking and that was one reason why the Hills chose not. Not to participate at this point is the twenty year clock starts ticking. So, um, if you're ten years down the road, you've established the, the, the tax increment financing district, ten years down the road and company A wishes to come in. You technically have forfeited ten of the potential years. However, Danos did say that. What, what they end up doing is then they end up just reconstructing and, and starting over again. However, to have it in right now gives you that opportunity that you are basically ready to go if you had a, uh, a, a potential. A, a potential business call tomorrow, you could already say, we've already got it in the taxing for the financing district. You know, still the board would still have the jurisdiction to approve. So it doesn't, it doesn't take a decision away from the board by taking an action to put this in the district. But it does allow that first step to be made, as you mentioned. Supervisors maybe is that you've already gone through the legal, you already have the description.
Yep. Definitely worth looking into and getting down.
Yeah.
And you know, like I say, it doesn't really change anything as far as taxation until things happen and gets things ready to wrap and roll.
Yes, particularly timely for the, the value in the current bunker because once. Once Cindy, you know, places it on the task roll, that's not cap, that's not capturable. And I don't know what that amount is, but it's, it's not capturable for improvements.
I'm venturing to guess you guys are ready to move probably fairly soon within a couple of years if you're going to be doing some things. Correct, I mean, that's.
Well, we're in planning stages now.
Yeah.
To tell you exactly what we're thinking, I can't do that today.
No.
I can tell you that we.
I do pick a few of the salesmen to bring you on tomorrow. So, no, just rumors, you know, that you hear about, so, and I, I'm excited, I mean, I was. The loose point of the process you went through getting the liquid plan into Northwood here and I, you know, I think it's time, if I didn't know one about it ahead of time, I'm sure would have worked with you at the county to find a good location for that. So.
Alan, we've seen some of the plans that have. Development years ago. Yeah, we should have seen those before.
Thank you.
Well, appreciate you guys coming in and doing work here, so we will be talking about it. Thank you very much. Right. What's up there?
Morning.
Morning.
Um, we received another revolving loan application and I'm working with him on his sources and uses of funds, um, before I send it out to the committee. Um, I did send an RSI to that company mark that you suggested I, I reach out to. And, um, they looked it over and they, they turned it down at this time, but they'll keep us on our radar.
Very good.
Uh, the rural summit is April eleventh through thirteen. AJ, I did sign you up, but let me know if you don't want to go and I can find somebody else. Um, and then I'm organizing a, a long-term recovery training and it's an all-day training that we've had some really good response in us. So there'll probably be a good fifteen people there at least, so that's good. Uh, and I updated our revolving loan application and, um, posted a sources and uses of funds spreadsheet on our website to make. The process, uh, a little easier for any applicants, um, just because there's a lot of questions right now with this current applicant. And then next week is spring break for my kids, so I'm going to. Probably take some vacation, uh, but if you need, my cell phone's always available if you need to get ahold of me.
Good. Just any questions? All right, thanks, Melissa.
That.
Yeah, Chris is not on today, right? Okay, so department head discussions.
Oh. Uh, so I am meeting with Secretary of State's office this week, Wednesday, they're having a cybersecurity meeting, uh, at Fusion Center in Des Moines, so I'll point you out that. Yes, it'll be wonderful. So, and then, uh, Manona County, I C I T is going in Manona County Tuesday, Wednesday next week to do an assessment to the local service and stuff, so. Other than that, China's hitting us pretty hard. Uh, so, you know, yeah, yeah, attacks are up. Uh, says an alert to this to a print nightmare one that's, that's out now that bypasses multi-factor. Uh, not our protector one, but it does, uh, does leave itself to, you know, multi-factor has been the, uh. The screaming point that the feds have been saying is bringing this dude, we need to do, we need to do, and now there's a, you know, we're seeing some of that getting bypassed, you know. We, we have our game, maybe up there again, we have our game, so it's the, it's the struggle as always, but.
At what point are we going to start giving blood to get our computers going?
I'm glad you asked, AJ. I was looking for a beta tester and it sounds like you're, you're the man.
Bring your finger.
Let it test.
Saliva, blood.
We need a test subject.
For the most part, you know, you get these suspicious emails as long as we're, we don't follow, pull the likes or whatever, I mean. You start reading them, you're generally okay and then delete.
Exactly, yeah. Um, if, if they do pop up, as long as you don't click on the links, you don't respond. You know, we're seeing the treasure ones happen quite a bit where they're asking for, well, we had actually Teresa Olson was impersonated to the church's office. Uh, you're asking for wire transfers. Uh, we did follow that one. The links to that one, we did explode them in the sandbox and it was a bank down in Atlanta, Georgia, so. You know, they wanted us to wire money to an actual bank account. Um, then.
Haven't seen payroll ones for a while.
No, but I'm sure they'll pop up here, uh, every once in a while, so, you know, like I said, everybody just be on their toes and. And like I said, email is still their main vector for, for getting here, but it looks like the Chinese are taking advantage of the Ukrainian situation right now to, to up their game a little bit and start. It must. You had something here.
Well, Thursday night we'll be doing a scam class, Joe and I own the Joyce Library, so. We've got two, two of them scheduled right now throughout the year, so.
For general public.
For general public.
Yeah, frauds and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yep, six thirty, correct.
I think that's all I've got.
I know, I will be backing up.
I get my scan update every Monday morning.
Yeah. All right.
Probably looks a little better, yeah.
So.
I just want to do, uh.
Sorry.
Remind everybody it's severe weather awareness week, uh. So there will be the tornado drill this Wednesday morning at ten o'clock. So, um, department heads take the time now to review procedures with your employees, especially any new ones. Put your shelter areas over, make sure that they're free and clear of anything that might be in the way, so. Tell Joel to get his stuff out of the way.
Good luck.
Yeah, it's, I got some new piles, so good luck, yeah.
Unplug it and move it out of the way, it'll be okay. That's all I have, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay. Next week's agenda items, have anything there around that? What's up?
Supervisor weekly?
All right. Yes, supervisor weekly.
Um. Partners for Children sent out another deal that. They'd like to do child abuse awareness month for April. Did you get a copy of that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to put it on the agenda next week.
Okay, uh, and then this week I had North Iowa Children's Alliance. And, uh, Jackie Miller, the new director, the last four or five months here. We're short in the board vacancies, a consumer representative and a health representative, and she wanted. Worth County or Hancock County to see if they could get somebody from the. Health, public health department, so I called in there and Shannon Butler's willing to do it. So she's going to represent Worth County on the medical side. For North Iowa Children's Alliance, and this is a good deal because we're finally getting some input. From counties other than, and not to knock them, so Sarah Gordon seems to have everything covered, so it's nice to get our own people in there. So we can get things done. Other than that, we went through the budget. There is no more preschool scholarships left. And then family connections, home visitation gave an update and calling the shots gave an update and. I'm big on oral health and calling the shots in those two areas there. But so, and that would be something that Shannon's going to try to.
She does.
She does, and she works out great because she's already working with school systems, so. That's what I had.
In a NICO meeting Monday night, um. We did get our new bus ordered or one bus that's not another six to twelve months out, so. I think we've got, they're slated to get seven or eight total. Um, we've finally been getting some funding in from the federal government, but taking a little time and. And, uh, so that's finally started to fall back in, um, so you can get the checkbook back in the good side, so. Really done a pretty smooth, Myrtle's doing a good job there, um. And then they're really, they got, I think, all but three counties and on the housing trust. Deal, um, I had made talk with all of them and I think they're all going to, going to continue, so. So the housing trust fund is, is going in the right direction too, so they can replace the homework. I was in trust, so. Uh, everything's going pretty good down there, so that's all I had.
So the only idea was a NICO board, which is my last meeting because. Went through the budget and their audits and everything was good there and then, uh, as Cindy's been trying to figure out how to downsize the board. And keep it, keep equal representation for everybody. She has a twenty-seven member board now, I'll stick it down to just twenty-one, which is still a big board, but. Heavily loaded up on the side that I was on and, and like I say, Worth County is represented with two people already upon the other, other two sectors, which is good. And, uh, so for now, I will be stepping off that board. I told her that anytime that I needed to, be happy to step back in there and be on there, but so for right now, like I said, I'm off that board, so if there's any. But he needs me out, just one less I have, so. And that's all I have, so. All right, um, next week's agenda items, is anything that's on a yet?
Let's, we probably need to talk with Heidi. Uh, or Jeff, their flying securities.
Yes.
Um. The doctor very last cycle, but you know. So we should probably reach out to them and, and they can either zoom, probably just easy zoom in or whatever. And, uh, because I know we need to get to that point of some tip that's out there now.
Right.
We need to certify some debt for that if we want to continue to use that. Or be able to use that, so.
One, one thing, um, is replenishing the. One of five.
So make sure we don't forget that. Um, so go on top of them and see what's, looks like it's going to be available.
To do.
Um, to do, yep.
Good.
So then we can, and that'll help us judge our decision on if we want to. You know, TIF. What percentage of that farm we'd like to tip versus bringing it in on the tax.
How we will about doing that.
Yeah, so, she said we could do it, it just, I think we just have to specify it in our original plan is that. But we can figure out a percentage that would boost our.
Budget balance.
Our budget balance.
I, I'm, I've got a question into John, I'm wondering if it needs to be specific turbines because I don't know how that would work with the taxes done, if it's like. If you have a chunk of them or, I'm not sure, but I'm getting.
We did set them up with, before the farms before were one parcel for eighty, so they're all set up separate, so.
Okay, so that would make it easier then.
Yeah, so we can say easier.
We could.
Ten turbines, take ten turbines. Yeah, so then we can say easier, we could ten turbines, take ten turbines.
It'll be a district and.
Yeah. Yes.
Maybe, isn't there something the city has to prove?
A couple of them, I think, because technically within that two miles.
Yeah, and yeah.
Right.
So. Yeah, if I want to add, there's if we can get hold of them, if I can call her and see if they'll come on at nine or nine thirty or whatever, nine o'clock, I don't know what else we have going next week.
Oh, budget. Not, not eight fifty or nine o'clock.
So maybe nine thirty, nine fifteen.
But I will try to zoom in and run it through Zoom, so.
Next Monday, okay.
Somebody might get to run their own lead.
It works well anyway, I'm trying to, I'm assuming I'm going to have internet connections.
And we would have public hearings, thank you. I would like to thank the people that are giving.
That was the only date they could pick, I guess, so that's all right.
I'll I'll tell, I'll ask her, I'll tell her about nine fifteen or something.
Yeah.
And so just we got to the public.
But you can zoom in.
I should be able to zoom in.
You should be able to run it off.
They said they had internet, so I should be able to log on and I'll pick my computer with.
Did we decide if we're going to do the Iowa, I, they didn't do it last year, but the year before when I wasn't on, they did March thirtieth as Iowa Honeybee Day. Are we just, are we going to do that?
I thought we usually do it every year, but.
Well, we just, it was a request and they haven't requested it again as far as. Oh, I I haven't seen anything.
Got an email on it.
There's one we can call.
You got it?
I printed it on.
Can I get the email, please?
I'll just send it to you.
Yeah, forward vector, so I thought your name was on there, but you were probably, you would have been gone, because it just came like.
No, he only sent it to the supervisors.
Okay.
Sorry about that, you did not get that.
Thank you. I already think I'm losing my mind.
We usually do it every year.
Yeah, they didn't do it last year, so I wasn't aware. But if you're going to do it, it needs to come on the twenty eighth, so.
Yeah.
And we're going to watch the B movie afterwards.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it involved that. But I I mean, I'm wide open.
Yeah. No, it's just a proclamation, so there's nothing wrong with doing that, so.
We're not giving money then.
No, we don't, they're not asking for it.
They're not asking for it.
We we get to pay for, well, it's not much, but we get to pay for beehives to be inspected.
Which we've always done, right?
Yeah.
Even without the proclamation, we have to do that, so.
Yep.
Because it's a, yeah.
And then we got Farm Bureau this Wednesday.
Yes, here, right?
At nine AM right here.
Oh, that's you guys too?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good thing I brought it up, huh?
So Joel will be here.
No, I won't.
You won't?
What time?
Nine AM, yes.
What time the cookies?
Nine AM.
I might swing by for cookies.
Because if they're as good as.
Shouldn't take more than twenty minutes, because AJ and me got to be out of here. They got meetings at ten.
All right, make it quick, Teresa's pretty good about this, so.
Okay.
If there's nothing else, then I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Moving second, all in fair say. Motion will carry. Thanks, everyone.